Okay, good evening, everybody. This is opening a board meeting, it's only a board meeting. This is our first Zoom meeting. You're going to have to be patient. I'm going to ask everybody to keep the video off and their button muted, their sound button muted, until a later time if they want to talk or something, then we can ask Kelly and she'll relay it to me. So at this point in time, when do we approve of the minutes for March? Benny, do you have any changes?
No, I have no changes.
Okay, Paul, you have any changes?
Yeah, I just had some cosmetic changes, which I'll get to.
You can get Kelly to be around.
Yeah, but basically, fine, you know. So I'll give them separately, Kelly, okay?
Okay, Adam, does Lenny have any changes in the minutes or any corrections?
He's muted, hold on.
Muted?
I am muted.
No, no, let me...
Okay. No. Okay, can I make a motion after the minutes be accepted?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
One second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. All right, next order of business is a question for Louis Ginin, G-I-N-I-N, 21 Croft Street. Is there anyone here representing Mr. Ginin? Kelly, do you know if he's going to be here tonight?
He said he most likely wasn't going to, but he didn't want me to keep, he wanted me to keep him on the agenda, but he didn't believe he was going to be.
Okay, we'll leave him on the agenda and we won't put him on the agenda for next month until he gets in touch with us. All right, you can notify him and say that, you know, because I'm not sure exactly where he's going with this. Okay, next is order of business is the continued public hearing for Jose Romero and 529 Route 9D. It's the one, as we all know, about the building permit, regards to building permit being issued and regards of the application, timely or not. Three different things were, new informations were mailed to me since the last meeting. First one is a declaration of...
I'm going to recuse myself.
Declaration, but, okay. Prove yourself. Okay. First one is a declaration of Mr. Romero regarding events that took place and it's notarized and signed under penalty of perjury. But Mr. Romero, are you there?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, you are, okay, Mr. Ram, Mr. Babcock are both there. Okay, before I let you go through this, I just want to, there's some dates in there I think you may be unsure of. On page one, go down to number four, you have on July 13th. I noticed what appeared to be questionable work on the property located at 529 Route 9D. July 13th of 2019 was a Saturday. And then after that, you said July 13th, you went to town hall. Now, town hall wasn't open on Sunday, could you...
I went there on the 12th, the 12th, I believe.
The 12th?
It was a Friday.
Okay.
And...
All right, now, okay, now, I'm going to go to this point by point.
Yes.
Okay, so you went to 12th, so we'll correct.
Excuse me.
So we're going to correct.
Sydney, oh, you're on.
Go ahead. All right, we're going to correct, correct? All right, we're going to correct that to July 12th, correct?
That's right, it was a Friday. Yes.
Okay, July 12th, because then you went back on the 15th, which is a Monday, that's when you met Mr. Warner.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, good. Now, go down to number five on your list here. You have immediately on July 13th, 2029. We know that it's not happening, 2029. Okay, so, see, this is a declaration that you swore to, and so I want to make sure it's correct. So that would be July 13th of 20, July 12th of 2019, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, correct, okay, good. All right, now go down on page, page four, okay? Page four, item number 16. You say, "On August 6th, 2019, Mr. Babcock and I, accompanied by Luke Hilpert, went to the Building Department, met with Mr. Warner." I don't think so, I did it to July 6th in your own, in your records, in your previous testimony. That was canceled and you met on August 12th. Am I correct?
No, that's not correct. We met on August 12th with Luke Hilpert in his office.
Okay, okay, so we're going to correct that August 6th, we're going to change that to August 12th, okay?
No, 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 we did not meet with Mr. Warner on August 12th. I have to double check on my calendar, to be honest with you, okay? And I will get back to you on that.
No, you did, all your prior previous testimonies, you met on August 12th. You had a meeting scheduled in your previous testimony for August 6th and Mr. Warner canceled it and then you met on August 12th. If your attorney is there, maybe he could, Mr. Hopkin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, could you correct that? What I'm trying to say is that Mr. Romero has, that you met on August 6th, I believe it was August 12th?
I met on August 12th with Mr. Warner and that was the date when we received the plans.
Okay, so the August 6th, August 6th one was the one that was changed, that it canceled, correct?
May I, no, may I address the chair? We met, we actually, I'm quite sure that we met with Mr. Warner on August 6th with Luke Hilpert.
No, I don't think so. I mean, from your previous testimony, let's ask your attorney, Mr. Hopkin, please tell us.
The meeting on August 12th was when we received the plans. The August 6th meeting that Mr. Romero is speaking of, I believe was the meeting when Mr. Warner would not meet with him.
But met with you.
But met with me.
Met with you, okay. And then you have another meeting on August 12th?
That's correct. We had a preliminary meeting on the 6th and then on the 12th, he provided us with copies of the plans and we reviewed the file, or I reviewed the file.
Okay, so you had two meetings, August 6th and August 12th.
Not with Mr. Warner.
That's correct. And that's when the, we provided previously the receipt from when we received the plans on the 12th.
All right, so my question is, on August 12th, you were at the Building Department with, you met with Mr. Warner and Mr. Romero and Mr. Babcock were there also?
They were not there, no.
That's correct, Mr. Hopkin?
They were not there on the 12th.
They were not there on the 12th, okay.
Because on the 6th, you wouldn't meet with them and then you met on the 12th.
And so they weren't there on the 12th?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Romero, is that correct?
Yes.
I have to get it, is that correct?
The...
That's correct.
That is correct, we were not there on the 12th, we were there on the 6th and the Buildings Inspector refused to meet with us and met with Mr. Hilpert behind closed doors.
On the 12th, okay.
On the 6th.
Mr. Hilpert?
Yes.
You filled out the application August 12th, right?
That's correct.
I have the application for the appeal, I mean for the appeal, August 12th. And it was signed on August 12th by Dr. Romero and Mr. Babcock and notarized by you, correct?
That's correct.
When and where did you do this?
When and where? That was on the 12th in Croton, my office in Croton.
It was done in your office in Croton?
That's correct.
I'm just trying to get the time scheme and line here where we're at. Okay. Now, do one more thing, Mr. Romero, and go to number 17 on your list. It said, "After the closed-door meeting, Mr. Warner also informed me, Mr. Babcock and Mr. Hilpert, that we could not file a petition with this board." Now, Mr. Hilpert, is that correct?
All right, I went back to mute. I don't recall on the 12th, I'm sorry, on the, after that closed-door meeting, if he specifically said that or not. So I, that I don't recall, I mean, I don't believe that.
What I'm trying to say, this is a, you don't believe what?
No, I mean, whether he, I know up to that point, he had said, he had advised Mr. Romero and Mr. Babcock that they could not file an appeal, that's what they told me. Whether he...
I understand it.
Said at that date to me or to us or not, I don't recall directly. But I know that Mr. Romero does remember that, so.
Well, all right, that's, you understand where I'm at with this, with this sentence, because he's saying here, it's an important sentence.
But that's correct.
Saying here that Mr. Romero, he's saying here in Mr. Romero under, under perjury, the perjury puts in here and he puts, oh, so they had it notarized by you. "After the closed-door meeting, Mr. Warner also informed me, Mr. Babcock and Mr. Hilpert, that we could not file a petition with this board." Now, Mr. Warner told you that, that's important. Is that true, Mr. Hilpert?
I do not recall whether he said that or not. I know that, at that meeting, Mr. Warner and I had a discussion and he said, he said, "Look, I understand if you have to, you know, go to court on this or if you have to do something, whatever you have to do, you have to do." But he didn't, that was not in front of Dr. Romero and Mr. Babcock. That was in the closed-door portion of the meeting. We came out and then he made statements to them. I was, frankly, I was surprised that we weren't going back in. So I don't, I don't recall if he specifically said on that date that, but that's not my statement, I mean, that's Dr. Romero's.
I know, I know that, but I'm just trying to say your name is in it, so I'm just trying to clarify. Mr. Romero, do you understand my question?
I do understand your question. Mr. Hilpert and Mr. Warner came from the closed-door meeting. It was my expectation that we would meet all together. And he refused, that is, Buildings Inspector refused. I asked him a number of questions, among which, "Please give me a petition, paperwork for the petition." That is correct.
Right. Oh, I know, but my point to this, Paul, thing is in your sentence here, you said that Mr. Hilpert heard, that Mr. Warner told Mr. Hilpert that he couldn't fill out the petition and he couldn't fill out the appeal.
Well, again, we were, the three of us, the four of us were there and that was exactly what the Buildings Inspector said. You know, it's not the first time that he denied me that.
No, I understand, I will go into that, but I'm just trying to get this, because this is an important issue. So Mr. Hilpert does not recall, Mr. Hilpert does not recall him saying that, okay? So I'm going to, I'm going to, for me, for my purposes, I'm going to strike that line out of your deposition. The part that Mr. Hilpert says, where you say, "Mr. Hilpert, they told Mr. Hilpert," but he doesn't remember that.
Excuse me, Mr. D., that...
Sure.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying he didn't say it.
Well, either we did, either we did or we didn't.
And, and what I'm saying to you is, I came out expecting to meet with my clients and bring them in to a meeting that we were going to have. And he said, "Mr. Warner refused to have that additional meeting." Mr. Romero was asking him questions, was talking to him, and I was trying to figure out what was going on here. If I don't remember exactly whether he said it or not, that's, I mean, that's what I'm telling you. But I'm not saying he did not say it.
And you're not saying he did say it?
I am not. From the tenor of the conversation, it would not surprise me if he did say it, but I'm not saying, that's not my sworn statement.
All right, that's all, no problem, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get it.
I understand.
All right, now, Mr. Romero?
I have a question.
Mr. Romero, would you like to address?
Wait, okay, could I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Did, if Mr. Warner said that you could not file an appeal, did he tell you why? Did he give you any reason why you can't?
He was quite non-responsive to any of my questions. I may backtrack a little bit. On July, prior to this, he had actually done the same thing, that on the advice of the Town Council, he would not provide me the plans nor the paperwork to file a petition. And in fact, the reason we were there was to get the petition and the plans, you know, to get to file this board. I mean, you know, that was the reason why we were there. We thought that we needed a lawyer to get the paperwork.
Right, and also, did, Mr. Hilpert, did Mr. Warner give you any reason why he would not permit your clients into the meeting?
I don't know if he gave a specific meaning, he said, "I met with you," and then he said something to Mr. Romero about him being a troublemaker. And that...
Isn't that unusual to exclude the appealing party from a meeting with his, with the lawyer for the appealing party?
I, the reason for the meeting, we had set the meeting for all of us to be there. So I did find it, I did find it odd. And like I said, it may be why I don't recall the, you know, specifics words that were used when we were outside in the front of the building, because I was taken aback by what had happened.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Mr. D.?
Mr. Romero, go ahead, Paul.
The attorney, Sebastian, like to say something?
Who is, who is he?
Sebastian is the other attorney, yes.
All right, Sebastian, who are you?
My name is Xavier Romero, my name is Xavier...
I'm sorry, I don't know you, can you identify yourself, please?
My name is Xavier Romero Mata and I represent Mr. Romero, Mr. Babcock and the Romero Trust. Go ahead.
Okay, so there are two attorneys represented, Mr. Romero and Mr. Babcock, go ahead, okay, go ahead, Mr. Romero.
I just want to make a quick, I just want to make a quick note. It seems that there might be an inclination to strike testimony, which is a little bit odd. The fact that Mr. Luke Hilpert may not recollect what Mr. Romero said is not relevant to strike testimony from a sworn declaration. The sworn declaration is what it is. Unless you have testimony to the contrary, that declaration is testimony and should not be stricken. That's all I have to say.
Okay, do you want me to lead the incorrect dates too?
No, I'm referring, I'm referring to the portion that you identified as being stricken from the record. The other portions, which Mr. Romero has provided clarification, can stand as clarified by Mr. Romero and as recorded in this hearing.
Okay, as long as you understand that Mr. Hilpert doesn't remember saying that. Is that clear?
Yeah, I mean, what Mr. Hilpert remembers or does not remember is already on the record. My point is that there is no contested evidence, other than what Mr. Romero has said, transpired at the meeting. If there is somebody else who's willing to step forward and say that that was not true, then let that person step, you know, step forward, but otherwise, this testimony should not be stricken.
That one line, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to strip this testimony. It's just my question was on that line that Mr. Hilpert doesn't remember. Mr. Romero, would you like to address your declaration further? Go ahead, Mr. Romero. And I'm sorry about Jose Romero, I guess, Dr. Romero. Would you like to speak more about your declaration?
No, I...
Okay. I think everybody read it, I think everybody read it. Ms. Claire, did you read Mr. Romero's declaration?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Mr. Stone, you read it?
Yes, I read it. I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Hilpert, if possible.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Hilpert, when were you fired by Dr. Romero?
On the 12th. That's what we, that was the date that I went with him previously, but the official retainer agreement, when, you know, we kind of decided that we were going to move forward and have to do something, was the 12th.
Were you aware of the 60-day clock on applications at that time?
Yes.
And one last question, how come you didn't file an application immediately?
That, I believe that we had filed it. It was not filed, so I'm not stating that it was filed any time before the 10th, which is when it was stamped as received, but that was, we went through it and, you know, I, once I reviewed the plans, I met with them, we went through the plans together, I put together some additional information and it was our intention that it would be there before the 10th of October, obviously, but that was, that was not the case. And actually, there was some confusion that led us to believe that it had been filed, actually.
Then what would that be?
It wasn't, but...
Then what would that be?
There was a prior, an email with Dr. Romero and the board, I believe maybe Mr. D., that had stated that we were on the agenda for the, I don't know if it was a September meeting or the October meeting. And then he corrected and said, "No," you know, a couple of days later, and said, "No, you're, I was mistaken, you're not on the agenda." And that's when we realized that it hadn't been there.
Oh, okay.
I have a question also for Mr. Hilpert. Who did you believe filed the application? Was somebody in your law firm?
Yes, I believe it was mailed out. I had believed that it was, well, it was supposed to have been mailed out from my office. And as I said...
As far as the, go ahead, Paul. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, who's responsible for mailing it out?
One of my paralegals. Javier is his name. Once I have something, I say, "Okay, this is ready to go, let's send it out."
Was it sent certified or registered?
No, well, ultimately, ultimately it was walked into the, I walked it in and met with, I don't know if Kelly was there, Linda was there, and it was stamped and, no, I guess Tara Percicello was still there at that time. And that was when it was...
Why was it not mailed out when you initially thought it was going to be mailed out?
I don't have an explanation for that. I wish it was, but it wasn't, that's...
Right.
And...
As far as the...
And what day did, what day did you walk it into the Code Enforcement Officer's office?
That would have been October 10th.
Okay, let me address emails now, you said about the, I thought he was on the agenda. Mr. Romero, Mr. Romero and I had been emailing back and forth. He had made me aware of his problems, that he was frustrated that he wasn't getting enough information. He asked me if it was on the agenda. I looked at the agenda and I made a mistake, I thought it was in, but it wasn't. What happened was, he, Mr. Romero, sent me an email on August 28th. Email states, "A permit for regulation interpretation of the town code was filed on August 12th, 2019, and I assume that has been received by the committee. Might you be able to advise him when the committee may meet to consider?" Now, that's where I made a mistake, I looked, I thought it was somebody watching. So I emailed him back, I told him he wasn't on, and he said, "Thanks for the update." That was on September 30th. He said, "Thanks for the update, please alert me when it will be in your schedule." And then I emailed him back, October 1st, because I checked and saw that they had no information. I emailed to Mr. Romero, reads, "I spoke with the secretary today and she has no application or information. You said someone gave you permission to get on the agenda, can you tell me who that is?" And that was at 8:07 PM on October 1st. I've seen an answer back from Mr. Romero, send date at 8:29 PM. And he said, "Mr. D., the petition was submitted by Luke Hilpert on my behalf shortly after August 12th. No one has responded to it. As I has informed you on the phone, three previous attempts to do so by the Building Department in person were not granted." So evidently, maybe Mr. Romero was on to the understanding I had been filed, but in truth, I checked the record both times, it had not gotten filed. So it should make that point of record.
No, that's, that's correct.
Would you like to address your letter that you sent us new information? You addressed the Town Council, the Town Attorney's letter to the Board on last night.
Sure, I'd be happy to, I mean...
Great. Would you like to speak to that?
Really, what's in there is what I wanted to get across.
Would you like to speak to that letter, Mr. Hopkin?
I would like to be heard. I don't want to necessarily repeat what's in the letter. I mean, you said that you read it and everybody has a copy of it, so that is, you know, that's what's before the Board. So I really just...
No, 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 but you can, you know, it's important, so go ahead.
Okay, so, really, I'd just like to kind of sum everything up. I mean, to me, it seems clear that when we, a reasonable reading of the code states that a building permit, that the permit should not have been issued. And that what we're really here looking at now is that Hillen Valley should have filed for a special permit. And that's what we're asking you to require, is that Hillen Valley file a special permit as required by the code. As to the timing, you know, I've provided you my interpretation of the law. Mr. Smith provided you his, Mr. Rods provided you his, I'm sure other people have weighed in with their opinions as well. I think what's consistent, what's important is, this law is, and it requires a petitioner to act diligently and to come before the Board in a timely manner, and they've set that time. The facts before you from Mr. Romero and Mr. Babcock is that they attempted to determine what happened, what was happening at their neighbor's property, on a number of occasions, they were prevented. That's not, that hasn't been disputed. You know, you've asked if anybody else wanted to come in, you asked Mr. Warner if he wanted to come in and speak to that. Nobody else has come in to speak to that point. And so I believe that under the facts and circumstances here, they obtained the information and they did apply within the timeframe, once that information was provided to you. I think the record's clear that if you look at the facts before you, the ones that are unique to this matter, this is, and you apply those facts and the law, you have an outcome that you and you alone are to make. I mean, you have, you are the review board here. You are to look at the facts, the record before you and make that determination and that's yours to, that's yours to make. So I appreciate your time on all this and I'm happy to answer any more questions that you have.
I hear, I just said, on your last paragraph, you devise that what you would think the correct course of action would be that the Board determine the appeal is timely and then declare the building permit invalid and then require responding to apply to the ZBA for a special permit. If that happened, if that took place, I just, I just want you to be aware that the Board would have the authority too, though, on a special permit to, on a special permit to approve the construction. Do we agree on that?
We absolutely agree on that. And we've never, and I think even in one of the first meetings, Mr. Babcock, in his statement, said that's, you know, they're just asking the Board to do what is required and asking the neighbors to do what is required. And, and so we certainly understand that, that outcome.
Okay, all right. Mr. Romero, Mr. Babcock, do you understand that outcome? Do you understand that?
Yes, we do.
All right. Was that what, is that what you'd be satisfied with, is that what you, is that your intention here?
Would you repeat that, what the intention is?
If your intention, is your intention to, like, to follow Mr. Hilbert's suggestions here, and go through, you know, like, you know, say it was timely, and then go so on and so forth, and then go have them file for a special permit? Is that your intentions also? Is that what you would like to see happen?
That has been our intention from the very beginning.
Okay. All right, okay.
Just if I could be heard on that one.
Sure.
That, based on what we're before this board, that's all, that's all that we can ask of this board. Is, is that that happened, and then during the special permit application, then it would be appropriate for them to be heard as to whether there ever was a finished basement, as to whether it's an addition, whether it's 25%, all of the other, all the other criteria would come in at that point, but, but what we're asking this board today, all we can ask this board today is, is that.
I, I understand, I understand. Is anybody here, Mr. Mrs. Rasic, or anybody from? 529 Root D, is there anybody?
Yes, Frank would like to talk.
Would you like to speak up?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Frank. Hi, Frank, how are you? I'd like to see you.
It's, it's nice to see everybody virtually as well, I, I hope everybody is doing well, staying safe, staying healthy as best that they can.
Okay.
As the board knows, we've been before you with this matter a number of times, beginning from last November. Between last meeting and now, the only new submission was on behalf of Mr. Hilbert. There are a few items that I would like to address, I will do them as briefly and succinctly as I can, and then if you have any questions for myself and/or Mr. and Mrs. Rasic, we're, we're here for that.
Okay.
So I, I would like to say that I reviewed the materials that were sent to Mr. Hilbert. I do disagree that it was improper for the town board to send the letter to the zoning board. I do think that the town board and the town attorney has an interest that is permissible to give an advisory opinion to the zoning board. The case that Mr. Hilbert did, that's Feinberg Smith Associates versus Town of Vestal, it, it speaks to improper influence from town board to zoning board very minimally. The circumstances are very different than what we have here. I don't think that that case applies, and particularly, it's a Supreme Court of Broom County case, so it does not have any binding authority on us here in Putnam. Also, Mr. Hilbert distinguishes the facts that are associated with the cases that I provided you. I would like to make clear that I was in no way, shape, or form saying that the facts of our matter were the same as the facts of the other cases that I provided, but that those were the best and most recent cases that helped illustrate the 60-day rule, particularly when it's a neighbor challenging a building permit that they didn't have knowledge of. Lastly, there was a case that was cited called Panza versus Demiano. That case was not factually similar whatsoever. It was a New York State Court of Appeals case, which would be binding. On my reading of that case, it appears that the decision by the Court of Appeals was specifically related to a city of Utica, New York code provision. I do not think that that case stands for the proposition that someone who is looking to revoke a building permit can go to the, the building department and get some kind of pre-denial before they go to the Board of Appeals. And if you look at some of the cases that follow the Panza case, there is a case in the Second Department that is binding on us here in Putnam County. It is called the Matter of Robert Schultz versus Town of Red Hook Zoning Board of Appeals. The citation is 293 AD 2D 621. And in that case, it, it does discuss the 60-day requirement, and that case stands for the proposition that the applicant had at least three weeks of knowledge to be able to challenge the permit, and that the, and that the application was submitted three weeks later than which it was required to be filed by. That's very similar to the fact that we have here, given that Mr. Hilbert was retained and still, you know, had, I believe through September 10th to, to file the appeal. So there was a month of time where there was an attorney retained on the matter, and then the appeal took another month to be filed with the building department. So again, I'm going to rely on my, my past submissions when it comes to the law. I don't think that the facts here really change what the appellate division would think. And, and lastly, it does appear that between the declaration and Mr. Hilbert's last submission, that there's some allegation of impropriety going on, that the Rassics were somehow involved in either misleading the building department or going along with something when they knew that it was illegal. My clients did the right thing. They went to the building department, they filed for a permit, it was approved, they continued work under a legally filed permit. To date, right now, that permit is legally valid. So there is no reason why they should have stopped work. There's means of recourse for people who want to challenge things like this. So Tim and Lisa, they're here this evening with us, they're stand-up members of the community, both of their kids are in the Garrison School. They're members of local boards, they volunteer. Garrison is their home, they're committed to the town, they're committed to making it a better place. And I, I think it's inappropriate to allege that they were somehow in on providing false information and things of that sort. So I, I would like to stand up for their character just a bit. They merely filed a building permit, it was legally granted, and they performed work pursuant to that. So again, I contend that this appeal is untimely. If the board does find it timely, then we can reach the merits of the interpretation itself. But for the reasons that I have laid out in our past meetings, and again here this evening, I think that the appeal should be dismissed due to timeliness. Thank you.
Okay. Is Mr. Mr. Rasic to like to speak? I don't, I don't know. Would they like to say anything?
I, I don't want to say anything.
I don't. No, okay. Kelly, does anybody else want to speak, Kelly?
Do briefly, and then Sebastian Romero.
All right, Mr. Romero, go ahead. Wait, Mr. Riel, go ahead.
We have never made any statements against our new neighbors, Tim and Lisa Rasic, or any implications about them or their character. In fact, a letter was widely circulated a few months ago, accusing by them, accusing us of intimidation and bullying. It was widely disseminated through Garrison. We have never, we don't have any personal gripe with Tim and Lisa. In fact, as you know, we welcomed them when they first arrived and offered to help.
Okay, all right.
I have one other question. I, I have a question for, for Mr. Hilbert, when you have a chance.
I'm here, go ahead.
Okay, my, my question is, the, the form that you took out on August 12th, did you fill out any of that in the office at that time, other than the date? You put the date on it.
When you said the office, do you mean the, at the building department or at my office?
Yes, yes, the building department.
I don't believe I filled it out at, at the building department, no.
Okay.
I, I, I think I went back to my office and filled it out, and then met with Mr. Babcock and Romero.
Okay, Kelly, does someone else want to speak, Kelly?
Yeah, Rachel Evans would like to speak.
Okay, Ms. Evans, go ahead.
Ma'am, good evening. I, this is, I have been upset by this case, so I'm just going to, just read what I've written. "I feel that Mr. Romeo has been able to paint the Rassics and Greg Warner in a negative light in the meetings I've attended, painting himself as a victim, even though both Tim and Lisa Rasic and Greg Warner are highly regarded here in Phillips Town. I believe he has done this by making accusations of withholding information and building too high. I believe his accusations are untrue, baseless, and self-serving. He is saying that he couldn't appeal because he didn't have the information he needed. This is not entirely true, and here's why. His lawyer notarized the appeal on August 12th and didn't submit it. At the town meeting where this was discussed, his lawyer made no such claim, and even, oops, I lost my, just a second, sorry."
Take your time. You okay?
Yes, his argument, their argument seems to be disingenuous because the lawyer never stated that his ability to file an appeal was made difficult in any way. On the contrary, he said that when he met with the building instructor, this is from the February meeting, on August 12th, and talked about the fact that they would be issuing an appeal. The, the, the building instructor's reply was essentially, and this I quote from the meeting, "I understand you have clients that are anxious in this, and you have to do what you're going to do." Did not say that he was going to withhold their ability to, that, the lawyer did not say that day that he had any reason to believe that he was, they were going to withhold an ability to file. On the other hand, the Rassics lawyer showed the opportunity the claimants had between August 12th and September 22nd to file. It seems that the claimant's lawyer admitted to not having filed it. Indeed, to my ears, his voice broke when he answered the question. The truth is, he failed to file it within the New York legal window, and again, I feel he was grasping at straws. First, further, they have said that the former house was a cottage. Truth is, it was a home that was lived in by a family of six. I live in a true cottage across 9D. Further, he shows across the road, literally. Further, he showed the rear of the Rassics' house, which he's showing right now behind his back, which makes it looks like this house is three stories. The truth is that because of the slope of the property, the basement is partly underground. The front of the house is clearly two stories, which they didn't show, and this seems to me to be self-serving. Finally, Mr. Romeo and his lawyer have displayed flagrant disregard for procedure, submitting materials right before the former meetings, which were discussed at the meeting. I wonder if this is true tonight. That's called ambush, not giving the Rassics meaningful opportunity to answer claims. Submissions are supposed to be turned into the town clerk two weeks before the meeting, so the information can be given to all parties concerned with ample time to review. If the ZBA is claiming that they are looking out for the community, do you not want a community that follows the law and procedure? It raises questions whether or not there is a bias or a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, anybody else would like to speak?
No, I don't see anybody else have, no, nobody else right now.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
Yes, I do.
Oh, Sebastian, okay.
I do. I think we should bring back some of this hearing to common sense and the specific facts that are before the board. I don't think there's any, anybody has contested substantively what Mr. Romeo has said, and more particularly, what's before his declaration. There have been some questions that have been raised by the prime chairman, who clarified the declaration, and Dr. Romeo, who has actually clarified the declaration, which as of this point stands as it is. Those are facts that are uncontested before the board. They have not been challenged, there has been every opportunity to challenge them, and that has not occurred. What we do know from the evidence that's before the board at the hearings, through the declaration, and through this particular hearing, is that Mr. Romeo and Mr. Babcock were not given documents that were necessary to challenge the permit that was issued to Route 529D, and so that he could present his argument that the permit was issued inconsistent with the zoning rules and the regulations. And that, and before the board at this time, there is a record that shows that Mr. Warner denied these records repeatedly and knowingly until August 12th. There is absolutely no other evidence before this board. If there is any, any issue with what my, Mr. Romeo has said, then somebody who should come forward and provide some evidence, not just some conclusory statements. It's very important that the board realize that its decision needs to be made on facts that are uncontested, not on accusations that are made online or that are made at in hearings. I think it's uncontested that the denial of Mr. Warner continued until August 12th. I have not seen or heard anything to the contrary, and I think it's uncontested that the Romeo Trust filed the appeal within 60 days after that. I don't think, I don't see any way that that can be avoided. And, you know, from the point of view of, a broader point of view, a reasonability point of view, I don't think it's reasonable for residents of the town to be actively denied access, and those are the facts that are before this board. And they were denied access by the building departments, and therefore by Phillips Town. Acting for Phillips Town as the agent for Phillips Town, Mr. Warner denied these documents. And then to turn around and say, well, we denied, you know, those documents to Mr. Romeo, but now, you know, we're going to essentially benefit from our denial in that we're going to claim that he didn't file within the 60 days, when in fact, it was the continued denial and obstruction which resulted in the, the documents being filed when they were filed. So I, I think that, I think it's important to underscore that. I have not seen any evidence whatsoever of Mr. Romeo trying to make any negative statements to anybody other than actively trying to enforce, you know, his, his rights and seek recourse before this board. It is just, it, it, from a common sense perspective, I don't think that this board should countenance the behavior that we've seen in terms of preventing access to documents. I don't, I don't think anybody in this community wants that to be the case going forward. I don't think it should be countenanced by the board, and I, I think the board should really consider this from, not just a legal perspective. I think legally, the facts are clear and they are uncontested, but also from a reasonable perspective. What we want the residents at Phillips Town to face every time something comes up regarding the application of, of a permit. And, you know, I, I do believe that the board is going to reach the correct conclusion, but like I said from the beginning, it's important in any hearing, whether it be this hearing or any type of legal hearing or quasi judicial or quasi administrative hearing, that we have clear what the facts are. And I think that the, the board should only consider the facts, add allegations that are unsupported in order to make the right decision, which is to find that the permit should not have been issued, and then follow whatever procedure is necessary, including a special permit, and determine whether it should be issued or not. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Kelly, anybody else who would like to speak?
Yeah, Matt Francisco would like to speak.
Okay, Mr. Francisco, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi, I just wanted, I just wanted to say that I was, I was shocked and appalled at the way Dr. Romero and Mr. Hilbert were treated by the building department. I think it was totally unappropriated and uncalled for. I, you know, we, we are there to serve the people of Phillips Town, and I deserve, I believe they deserve the respect of a citizen and should not be treated that way. I think in many cases, the right thing to do is to give them direction, even if they can't supply things, at least be proper with the people and direct them in the right way. And I'm, I'm not sure what was going on that day with Greg Warner, but if this is something that he has done previously, I would recommend that the board have a discussion with him about proper treating people properly, but I don't know enough about it to make, make that recommendation, but I think what I've heard was very upsetting, and I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you. Mr. I guess Kelly, Mr. Francisco wanted to speak, Kelly. Mr. Francisco, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes, I can hear you now, go ahead.
Great, no, I, I just want to just urge the board.
Just identify yourself, just identify yourself, please.
Matthew Francisco, Cold Spring.
Okay.
I just want to urge the board.
You should be on the board.
I, I chaired the planning board, I used to be a village trustee. We had, we had a similar issue in Cold Spring with review of a large development. We had, we had a similar issue in Cold Spring with review of a large development. Uh, at that time, Steve Gaba was also our attorney as well, and a similar thing happened with the, with the review where the, you know, the legislative and executive branch reached out to the historic review board and asked them, you know, to kind of, uh... And, and, and really, regardless of when he, I can't, we can't speak to anybody's intentions, only they know that. But obviously, you want to avoid the appearance of impropriety, and this kind of 11th hour communication at the behest of the town board to the ZBA to kind of abort the process is concerning, even if everybody has the best of intentions, and certainly, they share the risk. But obviously, you guys, and I, I really am encouraged by the comments that I'm hearing tonight from the, from your board, really smart comments, really trying to look and get to the truth, because what concerns me about this is to abort this in the 11th hour really kind of stifles any communication and really, and really kind of getting better. There's, there are a lot of pretty serious unopened questions, not just the least of which are, you know, the access records, but you know, this, as you had, as the chair had pointed out, you know, the, the change to the property card, you know, to the finished basement, whether or not a finished basement can even be swapped to zero out the increase in livable square footage. There are all these questions that are kind of left open if this is aborted. And I think that I, I'm encouraged, because I think you're, you're on the right track, but I just encourage you that one of the solutions that we came up with when I was a trustee was for the zoning board to get, not the zoning board at that time, it was the HTRB, to get independent counsel. Obviously, you've got, you know, two partners in the same law firm at the town as well as advising you, so that makes it difficult for, for everybody, really. But I, you know, I encourage you just to kind of stay the course, you know, if you can see your way. I mean, to, you know, to throw this out on a technicality of a 60-day, when really, you know, Jose and Sidney had no... I, I take them at their word, and I will tell you, I have had difficulty getting access to the records in the building department as well. The, the, the town does it, does the code enforcement on behalf of the village. They are essentially our files, but I have difficulty getting into files that are our files. So I don't, I don't really, I'm not terribly surprised to hear that they had these actions. You guys had good, you know, good witnesses, the kind, you know, person that was there when they requested them, so I think that's helpful to you. But I mean, I, I just, I am very encouraged, and I hope that you stay the course and that you hear this, because the, obviously, the only thing... It, it, it leaves the impression that, you know, that, that then this board is then more concerned about the concerns of the legislative body or the executive body, you know, the town board, as opposed to the applicants that are before you. I'm not hearing that tonight, and that's really encouraging, and I, I think you guys are doing a great job with a very difficult situation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, you have anyone else who would like to speak in your order?
Yes, Rachel Evans would like to speak again, but Mr. and Mrs. Raisik would like to speak also.
Well, let's have Mr. and Mrs. Raisik, please. Hi, and unmute yourself there, Ms. Raisik.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yes, I'd just like to state, which I stated before, that, you know, we're people too. We went, followed the law, we filed for a building permit and obtained a legal building permit. We filed with the building department, we filed with the health department, and we started construction, and we were working away, and then there was an appeal. And unfortunately, the appeal was made late. And the law is, you cannot submit a late appeal. So you are breaking the law by hearing this appeal. And this is, we've been breaking the law for the last several months, and we've been paying our attorney to, to basically be here. And we're just trying to do what's right. And I would really encourage you and ask you to dismiss this on an untimely basis.
Also, I would, I'm excited to jump in, but, um, Sebastian, I, I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, so I can't maybe refer to him appropriately.
Dr. Romero. It's the best of Romero.
You can, you can call me Xavier.
Xavier. So I just, you said that we need to get to the facts, but just as we, we heard very pertinent facts just on this call tonight, and they are, the fact is that the appeal was not filed on time. Their attorney admitted that. And furthermore, Dr. Romeo on the same call tonight, please recall, he said that he thought the appeal had been submitted. So what, why is there still a question? Why? You know, I haven't spoken this whole time because I was afraid I would get too emotional. And it's true, because this is emotional. As my husband said, we are people. We are citizens of this community. We matter. Our voices matter. What we are doing, we have followed the law. We found a house. We liked where it was. We saw a future there. We drew up plans. We thought we could put a, a second story on. We knew it was non-conforming, but we looked at the code. We ascertained that we thought we could do that. But we went, even before we purchased the house, we went to Kevin, I don't recall his last name, but the former building inspector, to make sure, to double-check, because we know, we've all read that code, we understand it could be, you know, but we're putting a major investment, we're making a major investment. Do you think we're gonna mess around with that? No. So we go to the building inspector before we bought the house, and we asked for his opinion. This is not Greg Warner. This is Kevin, whatever his last name is, or Donahue, I'm sorry. He said, "There's no problem here." I pointed out, I did this. I went to him. I pointed out, just as a reminder, this is a non-conforming property. Here's the code. We think we can. Can we? He said yes, unequivocally. Unequivocally. So we purchased the house, drew up the plans, submitted them. Greg Warner agreed with his predecessor. Now, we've been here for months, saying the same thing. Our story has not changed. Our timeline, the dates that we use, have not changed.
I thank you. Thank you. I, I understand what you're saying, and believe me, we understand. This is, uh, this is not comfortable for the board members either, believe me. Board members would rather be someplace else. And Mr. Romero, I just have to take exception to one thing you said, that the board has been doing this illegally for months. The board has not been doing anything illegally. On advice or attorney, we haven't been doing anything illegally. So I just said, take exception to that one comment. Now, Kelly, you had somebody else who wanted to speak?
Rachel Evans, Rachel Evans wanted to...
Kelly, if someone else wants to speak?
Yeah, Rachel Evans.
Okay, Ms. Evans. All right, Ms. Evans?
Thank you.
Ms. Evans? Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Um, yes.
Go ahead.
Just fairly quickly, I just want to point out that Greg Warner did speak for himself in February. And why, and what his, what his position was related to the, the meetings. I just want to...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like, Kelly, is there anyone else?
Um, no. Sebastian would like to speak again.
Okay, Mr. Romero.
Yeah, I mean, just very quickly, just very, very quickly, Mr. Chairman. We, we are deeply appreciative of the board's time. We're deeply appreciative of the opportunity we've been given. I, I do want to say that in no way, shape, or form do we believe that Mr. and Mrs. Raisik are any less members of our community than anybody else in the community. I think we have a disagreement, that this group, this agreement is whether, it appears at this point that the board is considering whether the appeals was timely. And that disagreement can only be resolved by taking a look at the evidence before the board and the uncontested evidence before the board, which is that Mr. Romeo was granted the documents necessary to file, to review the documents, to see whether in fact, you know, the construction was appropriate under the zoning laws, and that occurred on August 12th. The board can make its decision on, on the basis of these facts. And on the basis of these facts, regardless of what transpired with Mr. Hillperg and anybody else involved, Mr. Romeo filed within 60 days. And that, we believe that to be uncontested. We believe that to be determinative of the decision by the board. We suggest that respectfully. And there seems to be a sort of an elephant in the room. We do feel for Mr. and Ms. Raisik. But what's happened here is that there is a party that's not present today that stood in the way of Mr. Romeo recently getting access to documentation. And that is also uncontested. So I, I submit very respectfully to this board that it should take into consideration that there is somebody who was acting for the buildings department and for the town of Phillips, uh, Phillips Town, who stood in the way of Mr. Romeo having the access to documents he needed to file. And as soon as he got the documents, he filed, and he filed within 60 days. So if the issue here is whether the filing is timely, I respectfully suggest that the facts are uncontested, that he did file within August 12th, and that the person who bears responsibility for that is Mr. Warner. And it hasn't been contested that he denied these documents to Mr. Romeo. So there is a reason. It's not the, the Raisiks. The Raisiks are actually victims here, as, as is Mr. Romeo. And we believe that this board is gonna reach the right conclusion, which is at this point in time, you know, the permit should, that the, the appeal was filed on time. And if there need to be additional proceedings, we'll have additional proceedings, but this is not Mr. Romeo's doing. This is, this is Mr. Warner's doing, who is acting as an agent for Phillips Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, is that it?
Um, it looks like Frank Smith has...
Mr. Smith, you look, I guess your hand up? No?
Yes.
No, okay. Is that your hand up, Mr. Smith? Yeah, this is something, Zoom, you put your hand up like in class. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last point that I'd like to reiterate is that I can't, I can't stand here in, in good conscience and, and have accusations that this is an 11th-hour job coming before the board. This board was submitted the relevant case law prior to our first hearing in November. What the board chooses to do with that is up to the board's discretion. The same case law that was cited by Mr. Gaba in his February 26th letter had been before the board since the previous November. I have not heard a single aspect of law that is contrary to what I and the Raisiks have shown this board. We can talk about the facts all we'd like, but whether those facts will change longstanding case law precedent is a completely different story. If someone were to provide me with relevant law to show that this application was filed timely, that it was filed within the 60-day guideline, I would be more than happy to read it, review it, and give you my analysis. But contrary, there is no other law. 60 days, that's it. So we can talk about the, the town attorney coming in at the 11th hour. We can talk about a new attorney coming in for the applicant at the 11th hour. It still doesn't change anything that has been submitted to this board. And until there's a submission that's contrary, then I'm going to stand with my research with what I've submitted, and I respectfully request that this board dismiss the appeal due to untimeliness. And this evening, since we've been here since November of 2019, and now we're now in May of 2020, I respectfully request that the public hearing be closed and this matter be set for a vote. Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to say something. Um, first of all, I just, I'd like to say to this, Mr. and Mrs. Raisik that nobody here wants to deny you the ability to have a certificate of occupancy on your house. I, I think unfortunately that, um, that you, the information that you got regarding the permit was fallacious. I mean, however, and, and also, I think it should be noted that the second item on our agenda is a request for a special permit for exactly the same thing that you're asking, putting a second floor 100% of, uh, additional space on a non-conforming, pre-existing house. I mean, the, the procedure is to ask for a special permit. I mean, if, if you were to ask for a special permit, I doubt that, I, I'm sure that the board would, I will, let's say, would be very likely to grant it. Um, um, in regard to the timeliness, yeah, it wasn't filed between, by the 60 days after the applicant first had knowledge of, of the situation, but that wasn't the fault of the client, of, of the, of the appellant. He, he had the impression that it was filed. So I, you know, it's very, it's very difficult to, uh, you know, to address this. I mean, certainly, we don't want to deny you access to your house, you know? So I guess you should know that. Um, but we don't feel, I don't feel anyway, that it was, that the, the permit was issued correctly. Um, and, you know, I, I would be happy if, if that could be corrected, you know? And then you could get, you know, a special permit. Then, and I think that would maybe resolve the situation. Anyway, that's what I, that's my thinking.
All right, Kelly, I think that's about it.
Um, there was a David Gelber who had raised his hand before. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Mr. This will be it then. Mr. Gelber, go ahead.
So, uh, my family and I live on 9D. We, we hope to be neighbors of the Raisiks in the near future. To, to me, this, I mean, I, I listened tonight, and it strikes me as being a kind of an open and shut issue. I mean, uh, there is a very clear rule about timeliness. Uh, it was not fulfilled in this case. To, to ignore that is, is, uh, you know, it seems to be, to me, to open the possibility of creating a kind of chaotic situation down the line. I don't know why you'd want to do that. This is fairly straightforward, and I, I would urge you to, to dismiss this, this appeal.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kelly, and that's it. Right, Kelly, anybody else?
There was, somebody had written, um, let's see. Rachel Evans wanted me to read something. It just said, "It is not true that Romero's lawyer filed right away. It has been shown over and over, Mr. Shapiro keeps saying that, but Lisa Raisik pointed out that Romero's attorneys thought that the application was filed. This was his own testimony." And that's it.
Good. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion? A second?
Lenny made the motion.
Well, Lenny made the motion, and Mr. Sestone seconded.
Oh, exactly, right.
All right. All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So the public hearing is closed. Now I need a motion to vote on zoning code section 175, 59 F1, which is the untimeliness of the, uh, timeless or untimeliness of the application, and that's under the town of Phillips Town zoning code section. Can I get a motion to make, to have a roll call vote?
Just to be clear, is, is the motion, just the wording, is, is there a mo, is your motion that the instant application should be dismissed on untimeliness? Is it, that's the motion?
Well, I, the motion is, it's a bit of a vote.
Right, but the motion is that the application, uh, again, you'll vote on it, but it has to be phrased as the, um, motion would be that the instant application is untimely because it doesn't comply with the town code, correct?
Correct. All right, can I get that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Sestone, a second?
Let, let me second it.
Let me second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Mrs. Sestone, your vote, please.
If you'll indulge, indulge me for a second. I just wanted, I just wanted to say, I've gone through this application, and I, I believe that the application was defective. It's quite obvious to me that if you go through the records, that room that was in the basement... It's quite obvious to me that if you go through the records, that room that was in the basement was not legal, there was no CVO, there was no building permit, I believe it was a homeowner making space for themselves and not even thinking about it. With that said, the issue of timeliness, the, the issue of timeliness is to protect the, the Raisiks and Dr. Romero equally. It's a 60-day clock and it's quite obvious to me that Doc, Dr. Romero did not meet that condition, therefore I, I vote in support of the, the denial of timeliness.
All right, so your vote is that, your vote is that the application was not untimely? Untimely, okay.
Right.
Okay, can I have Mr. Lenzville, please? Adam?
Lenny, how do you vote on timeliness? Is the? Lenny said he votes that the application was late.
Wait, untimely, okay, which two was untimely. Paula?
Okay, well, as Vinnie has said, I think that the original permit was issued in error and I think that they should, a, a special permit should have been requested. However, it's obvious that the, even though the, Mr. Romero and Mr. Babcock believed that the, that the appeal was submitted in a timely manner, because that was their impression from, I guess, their attorney, it apparently was not. So, and I think that there were extenuating circumstances as well from the building department that they were not accorded the necessary paper or application or documents that regarding the construction to, to, you know, to, to file an appeal. However, I'm, at, on August 12th, the attorney did have that information and he could have filed it within the 60 days, so unfortunately I have to find that it's untimely.
Okay, thank you. That's three, three roll call vote, three decisions. My decision is based on facts, I have it based on facts. I had Mr. Romero sign a declaration which was dated May 1st, 2020, and notarized by his attorney Luke Halpert, which states therein, "Mr. Romero first noticed renovations and/or demolition of construction of the structure located at 529 Route 9D Garrison, New York on July 12th, 2019. Mr. Romero retained attorney Luke Halpert August 12th, 2019. The ZBA appeal form was completed and signed by Mr. Romero and Mr. Babcock and notarized by attorney Halpert on August 12th, 2019. Per Mr. Romero's emails to me dated August 28th, 2019, the ZBA application was filed on August 12th, 2029. Phillips Town records showed that it was not filed that day. Per Mr. Romero's email dated October 1st, 2019, the ZBA application was submitted on behalf of his attorney Luke Halpert shortly after August 12th, 2029. Phillips Town records show it was stamped and therefore filed on October 10th, 2019. Under section 17559 F1 of the town of Phillips Town zoning code, the 60-day time limit to file with the ZBA appeal was 60 days from Mr. Romero first cited the renovation by his own declaration. Mr. Romero first noticed renovations on July 12th, 2029. Therefore, the 60 days expired on September 10th, 2029. For this reason, I vote this appeal was untimely." All right, so the vote was, at this point is unanimous for that it was untimely. Second issue, as far as the permit and building code and all like that, under advice from our, our attorney, this cannot be discussed and we're not, it's not within our jurisdiction to hear this case. So at this time, I'm going to ask, it's all business is finished, it's not any, any old business, new business? Anybody have any old business or new business? No?
Bob, I just want to know, two people, two people have written something about this. I didn't know if you wanted me to read it or if you want me to just leave it as is.
Well, it's over, so I don't know what, what a value it's going to be, okay? I guess you can read it if you want, go ahead, read it.
It's from James R., it says, "In support of the Raisiks, the appeal was not filed on time and making an exception opens a can of worms for all future residents going through the same process. Any client must be accountable for the process, otherwise you can always blame someone else." And then Courtney Schatz writes, "We are Garrison residents here in support of the Raisiks. They have followed every procedure to the letter of the law. Please adjudicate this situation for the benefit of them and the community. Courtney and Kent Schatz."
Okay, well, the decision has been that the application, the application was untimely and we can't hear it. So this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this time, the meeting is adjourned and please be noted that next meeting will be in June, second Monday in June, and I guess we're going to continue doing this on Zoom until we hear otherwise from, from town board. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks.
Bye.
Yes, yeah, it was 4-0.
4-0.